All right, we'll call our meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And get started with our land acknowledgement. The town of Colhurst is looking at it in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. First of all, looking at the adoption of the agenda, is there any objections to the agenda as presented?
Yes, can we add to the close section personnel?
Uh, yes, would you like to, uh, so you'll make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there any questions on the motion? No, um, all right. So councillor Florence has made that motion. Um, any discussion? Call a question, all in favor? That's carried. And then, um, just, so just again clarification, this, we're good now that we actually have to do a formal motion? Because there was a change. No, okay. All right, so the motion is good to go, or the agenda is amended as amended?
You can ask if, um, if there's any objection to the agenda.
Okay. Is there any objection to the agenda as amended?
There isn't, thank you.
Thank you. Good. Moving on here, uh, so we have no public hearings, we do have our previous meeting minutes. Um, is there any direction to the meeting minutes as presented? No?
Okay.
And then we'll move right on to staff reports. So the first thing that we have is Director of Corporate Services. And maybe what I'll do is, you do have the report in front of you. Um, so I will just go to council to see if there's any questions on the report. Um, and then if we do need clarification.
I have no questions.
No questions?
On the report.
Okay. No questions from anybody?
Um, sorry, just a question through the mayor. So that we, when you talk about like various grant programs and handing in the SFEs, um, is there a lot of work to do? And what would be an example of something that you have to hand it in for? Like, is it for MSI or is it for like specialty grants?
Uh, through the mayor, to councillor Florence. Um, there's MSI capital, it's like operating the CCBF or, uh, it's called Canada, Canada Community Building Fund.
Yeah.
Or it's called Gas Tax. Um, there's a PCP grant for, um, some, uh, infrastructure studies. Uh, then there's the, any grant that we have, we spent money on, the, the request that we, we send back to them how much we spent this year and to keep track of where that's at.
Okay.
So it can be, it can range from, if we have a low grant here, just a few, to as many grants to be pulled out and are accessing in a given year.
Okay.
Um, any further questions?
I have many.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question on the tax recovery. Is there any properties and owners that are under this, um, concern area of concern number?
Uh, through the mayor, councillor Potry, uh, yes. Um, so at, as of, I didn't run a new report today, so as of Friday, um, they, uh, there's about twenty-three properties that will have notifications put on them. Um, that's a little higher than normal. Um, last year, which we put on for maybe four or five or something like that. Um, and, uh, we just got payment for one of them today, so we now have another on, have got that here. They've all been cleared out. Um, so, uh, there's no properties that are currently registered. At this point, if there was something registered still a year later, then it starts moving towards the tax sale process. Um, but the payments came in, they got cleared up, and so we don't have to do that process, which is great. Um, so it's kind of, this is the start of that process where we say, hey, this is where it's going. Um, and generally, property homeowners will then, uh, get their funds paid by, by the, by following year. To care that, there are other options, there are options they can, if they at least pay the two-year amounts, uh, the two-year arrears amounts, um, then they come off the list for this year. They can also enter tax agreements where they set up a paying, paying, they can take kind of a, it's following, and we estimate what's going, but might be coming in the future years, and over three years, they can pay off that full balance as well. Um, so there are options to help, uh, property owners to avoid the tax repayment process. Um, but it's kind of, they need to reach out, I've been emailing and phone calling the people who are on this list, and to various levels of success.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you for your report. Um, we'll move on to the Director of Community Development report. Again, same process, council and questions?
Yes, just a, just a big thank you. I, I look forward to hearing what's going to be coming up for volunteer appreciation.
Absolutely.
I think that's going to be really successful for our community, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on now to the safety codes permits report. And maybe I will just, um, I'll turn this over to administration to provide some, some context around this.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Montine, I'll take that. So this is just a, this is actually a summation I put together of, uh, Park's annual reports that they submit to us, which are in a much higher level of detail and include addresses, names, et cetera, what type of permits were taken out, but I thought council might want to see how many building permits for, for instance, we issued in 2023. Uh, a little slower year on in terms of development permits, but there were still a lot of safety code permits going on, so there are a number of installations that don't require development permits, like interior modifications, accessory buildings under certain sizes, that kind of thing. So this is just culmination of that report, and you can see that, um, in total, Park on our behalf issued a hundred and three safety code permits. Uh, closed off a hundred and one and did a hundred and fifteen inspections last year.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Um, so it's a closed, they issued a permit and closed permit, so that's, that means they've done the work and they closed it. Is that what I meant?
Yeah, so, that's correct. Um, so they've issued them because there's a stagger over the year-end, that you, the numbers isn't always, isn't always the same, so, um, they also had a number for open permits out of this year, but they didn't pick out that much validity, so I didn't include.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you for that. Um, so with that, we're going to move on now to our first, uh, request for decision. And so this is the Spray Park holdback payment funding. Um, so maybe what I'll do is I'll turn this over to administration to just, uh, go through this, we do have the report for us, but.
Yeah, I'll pass it over to Mr. Patsy.
Uh, thank you to council. Um, yeah, this is kind of a, um, there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense that came up for the Spray Park, uh, in, in, in the holdback amount, so there was two hundred thousand dollars that was more withheld rather than a holdback. A holdback is, is, is an official way of, of holdback those funds for, um, to make sure our thinking, the project is continued properly. Uh, there were some of those withheld because there was, uh, some deficiencies that were, that were a little more than that. So that, that amount was paid out and set up and recorded in, uh, in the 2021 and paid out in 2022. The holdback amount, uh, was never recorded, and so, and when it was time to pay that to the company who performed the work, uh, there was no funding source, uh, available for that. Uh, this project was funded through, uh, the, uh, donation from the older Parks and Rec Society, and then also through MSI Operating. Um, the MSI Operating, uh, project for this was marked as complete at the end of 2021. And, uh, and, and so there's not, they can't just apply those funds to MSI under this, under that same project. Uh, so in order to, to fund this project in, in 2023, these expenses, um, I, there are a couple of options, one is to, uh, use, um, some of the funds from the General Reserve to fund it, then you can find another source to do it as well. One option is to, um, apply to MSI again to, uh, to have those funds be paid through MSI. Um, then you can also just kind of leave it on the, on the books as it is, and it would flow through to the surplus or, or deficit at the end of the, the audit. Um, I would recommend against doing that third option, uh, because this is a capital project, you want to have funding, don't want to just kind of run it through in that way. Um, the MSI, funding it through MSI again, uh, it, it's kind of, uh, six of one, half of another. If we fund it through MSI, then that's MSI we can't use later. If you fund it through Reserve, that's Reserve we can't use later. So it's kind of, it, the end result is there's a, there's a, uh, it's just moving some figures around or belting around the pot. At the end of the day, it's the same, there'd be fifty thousand dollars less of whichever one to do projects going in the future.
Great, thank you. Um, we're going to council, see if there's any questions? Go ahead.
If, if we funded from, um, yes, he's recommended here, the recommended, recommended option is the General Reserve, but you're saying it doesn't really matter whether it's MSI or General Reserve. Is there any additional work, I guess, that administration has to do for it? If we funded by some, uh, through MSI, like it's, because we've already funded some of it through MSI, is it like another project, is it like that? And that kind of like from the province at all, or?
Uh, through the mayor, councillor Potry, there would be a, a new application that would have to go in. Um, those applications can take weeks to months to approve. Um, and so, it is, it is a path we can take, uh, but it's kind of, it leaves that unknown, I suppose, whether they'll even approve it. Um, I don't think they would decline it, uh, but it just, it just leaves that period of time where we have to do something. And so on, on the books, it ends up that we would set up a receivable, um, to fund it through MSI, uh, for, to close off by 23. If they declined the project, then our receiver would sit on the books, and we'd have to fund that receivable and negate that one and fund it from Reserve or some other way. If we were successful in our application, which was, is likely, um, then it would, uh, we would just then have that receivable and negate that on the books for the one year going forward. Um, is it more of a timelines kind of thing, um, that the, the, yeah?
Great, thank you, other questions?
We are. Um, so when we're looking at that, if I could, to the mayor, to, to Patsy, when we were looking at, um, sort of, I guess, you're sort of identifying some potential risk in terms of having it, you know, the timeline and the potential for it being refused. Are we, are we weighing it against the risk of the MSI funding? Um, sort of the change in the funding, and we always talk about, there may be some concern if it gets blocked back if we're not accessing that funding. So are we sort of weighing the risks?
Uh, through the mayor, to councillor Caldwell, uh, that, that doesn't, that's not going to impact any of this one. We spent enough, uh, MSI this year with, uh, other projects,
Mm-hmm.
that the, the amount that we were, uh, that we would potentially have had to send back has been, that risk has been negated.
Okay.
Um, we used enough other projects to, to fulfill that requirement. Um, this is just an extra, an extra expense on, on that, on, on, on whole project.
How much money do we have in total though on hold in the MSI right now? Do we have, do we have an approximate number?
Can you explain what you mean by on hold?
But, well, we've, we've allocated so much, right? Um, per year, and then we have funds that are going to spend, I guess you'd call it, right?
Um, we have currently available to us, uh, about one point six million. Um, and the amount that is all, uh, within the capital budget for 2024 is allocated to various projects.
Okay.
That's another, uh, point that I should make, is that if it were to be used, if MSI funding would be used to fund this, uh, it would mean finding some new funding for a lot of 2024 projects and moving some things around, uh, which is something that will have to be done anyway, uh, with the project kind of coming in 2023, um, that we will bring forward to council for, we should be, um, look at some budget in this room here.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, um, just through the mayor, to, um, Mr. Patsy, sorry, I can't remember your title right now. Um, I, I, I guess this is just, it's, it's a little disappointing, right, to have this, this fifty thousand dollar that should have been paid in 2021, it should now be on 2024 books, right? Um, but how much do we put into the reserve, the General Reserve? We allocate yearly to that, um, to replenish it, but do you know approximately how much?
Uh, to the General Reserve, we don't have an annual allocation to it. Uh, however, in, I can't remember what month it was, it was probably in June. Um, the General Reserve is where council allocated the surplus from 2022. So we added, um, we, we, we put two hundred and twenty thousand dollars into the General Reserve, um, just a few months ago.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, any additional questions? No, okay, so, um, before us, we have been given some recommendations for, um, a motion. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion on this question?
Um, I move that council approved the use of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-one cents from the General Reserve Fund to the Reserve to fund the holdback payment of the Spray Park.
All right, is there any, um, questions of clarification on the motion? All right, so Deputy Mayor has, has made the motion to approve the use of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-one cents from the General Reserve to fund the holdback payment of the Spray Park. Um, would you like to speak to this motion at all?
Sure. Um, like councillor Florence said, it's a little bit disappointing to see that come through at this time, however, I understand that we're just trying to, um, make sure that everything's right. But given the information, I think that the General Reserve is the best source for this, because it's going to create the less headaches and less administration time to kind of deal with this. I think if we look at MSI, it's going to be, um, a little bit of resource heavy to get that same payment made, so that's why I chose the General Reserve for this.
Great, thank you. Um, we'll just go down the line to see if anyone would like to speak to this. Uh, councillor Potry?
No problem, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Florence?
No, thank you.
Councillor Caldwell?
Thank you, thank you. And I, while I respect the, um, the decision to avoid the additional, uh, resources required to access MSI funding, um, I appreciate the answer to the question, that our MSI funding is fully allocated, uh, for 2024, and so that we don't, if, if there was, uh, money still being held there for us, I would, I'd be strongly advocating we went down that path, although it is resource intensive. It is also funding that needs to be spent, and so it's much nicer to take it from there than from our, our reserves, but, um, I'm in support of that motion, with the information, um, which Patsy shared.
Good, thank you. Um, would anybody like to speak again? Would you like to close? Good? All right, um, so again, Deputy Mayor has made his motion. Um, I will now call the question, all in favor? Uh, that is carried. Okay, moving right along to our strategic communications plan. Um, I'm going to again turn this over to administration to just, uh, walk us through, so we'll go to council to see if there's any, uh, questions.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm just going to turn it over to you right away, so.
Thank you very much. Um, so this strategic communication plan has come before council because this really, um, came from council's strategic plan. This has been developed, uh, entirely based on the goals and objectives that council has outlined. And, uh, the reason that you would see that this actually goes one year beyond council's strategic plan is so that as you get a new council term and that council, uh, builds out their own strategic plan, that we, we still have some continuity. Um, but you'll see in here that it is based on, uh, the pillars of increasing community engagement, providing Colhurst residents with exceptional service, making informed decisions based on principles of good governance, and anticipating and responding to the social needs of the community. I outlined, uh, all the different areas of the plan in the report, um, and have provided, uh, the, the draft plan to you, uh, to take a look at. Um, one of the things that is really important from, uh, my perspective is having council endorse the plan. Um, and the reason for that is there's a lot of work that has to happen once that is endorsed. Um, and this is really not just about how we as administration are communicating with the public, but how we're communicating on behalf of council. And so that's why it's, it's critical, in, in my professional opinion, of making sure that council's comfortable with it and fully aware of the work that needs to take place afterwards.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm going to go to council, see if there's any questions, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, I apologize, it's just a comment. Um, I have to say that it's not very often I get emotional anymore about council stuff, but I got a little teary when I read this, I just think it's so incredible, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Any other questions from council?
Okay, I'm sorry, those are big shoes, you guys. That was a big statement.
Go ahead.
Just a question through the mayor, to, uh, the Director of Community Development. So when this is implemented, um, how much of, of your time will it take up to implement this plan on an ongoing basis?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, I don't have a, an estimation as to how much time it will take, this is ongoing work. And so, um, one of the things that, uh, is not included in here is specifically a timeline.
Yeah.
Um, and it's actually a, a conversation that I had with C A O patients, and that this is work that is just ongoing. So it's, the projects will happen as time will allow, it won't be taking away from, uh, other works such as major community events and, uh, other community development priorities. Um, everything will be shifted because it's always dependent on the priorities that council may have, the, uh, needs of the community, um, but making sure that we get things in place such as a formal community engagement strategy and that sort of thing, so that we can move the other projects forward and the work, uh, the work forward that council is expecting through the strategic plan.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and thank you for answering the question, this looks, this looks awesome, I'm really excited about it.
All right, so if you have no further questions, again, we do have, um, some, um, potential motions, but I can maybe look to the motion on the side.
But I can't read the screen, so I'm going to go back to, um, here. Just give me a moment, and I'll go back to the original strategic engagement with the options for a motion. It's difficult reading the screen from a private angle, and so I will just basically keep here because there were some options that were presented to us, right?
Yes, and the, the one at the bottom, RFD, was the recommended one, I believe.
That's correct, here we are, right here. Okay, thank you.
It's seventeen, if that helps, councillor.
It does, thanks, yeah, no, I just had to bounce back to, um, that attachment. Um, and so, we do have a, look, I'm going to just ask, so the following amendments are that council endorses strategic communication plan, I get, I see what we're seeing here now. Okay, and so based on the recommendation from administration, I will make the following motion. Um, that council endorsed, and please tell me if that's the same one, it's on the screen up there. Uh, that council endorsed a strategic communication plan as presented, and furthered the council direct administration to begin implementing the plan immediately and to bring back individual communications-related projects for council's review, consideration, and approval only if they require funds to be approved by council in order to be completed.
Yes, that's.
That's the same thing, thank you.
All right, is there any questions on the motion? No, okay, so councillor Caldwell has made this motion. Um, would you like to speak to this?
Then I, I did speak earlier, but I will just say that there was a tremendous amount of work that went into this. I, as I was reading it and looking at our strategic plan, I was just, I was really impressed by the work and how well of the lines, and, um, I just, again, thank you.
Would you like to speak?
Yeah, um, just wanted to say thanks for your work on this. When I was reading through this document, I was very impressed with the way that it was laid out. And if our communication is anything like this document, I think we'll be in fantastic hands. I was kind of thinking about how information was presented when we were first elected, and I see this as an astronomical step forward. So I'm very, very excited to see this come through, and I think it'll be absolutely fantastic for the community.
Councillor Potry?
Uh, yeah, I'm just echoing what Deputy Rector was in councillor Caldwell said, so I'm, I'm in support of it.
I'm in support of it, I'm pretty confident.
Thank you, looks great. Would anyone like to speak again? Councillor Caldwell, would you like to close, or are you good?
Uh, I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay, okay, that sounds good.
I could, I could get some tissue and just expand further.
All right, so.
This is seventeen years, okay?
See, now I'm disappointed that my safety code report didn't bring anything.
So councillor Caldwell indicated that council endorsed a strategic communications plan as presented, and furthered that council direct administration to begin implementing the plan immediately, and to bring back individual communications-related projects for council's review, consideration, and approval only if they require funds to be approved by council in order to be completed. Um, I will now call the question, all in favor? That's carried. All right, then moving right along to our next item, which is the, um, youth summer program. Again, I'm going to just turn this over to administration.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, so, long report, but I'll keep it short and sweet verbally, um, because a lot, a line share of the report is speaking to the, uh, survey of, you know, two community members for a couple of weeks. Um, in, in my read of it, I would say it was outstanding, the response that we got over that time, nearly a hundred and sixty respondents, nearly sixty of those being young people, which is really the, the group that we're wanting to hear from, to find out what they're looking for, um, and also to understand what would hold them back from participation. I thought it was really interesting to find out that it's generally because they don't know what is available to them, or they don't know if they're going to have a friend there. And thinking back to when I was a youth, those would probably be the two reasons why I wouldn't participate. So it really does kind of give us a goalpost as to how we approach, um, promoting what is available and, and trying to get folks involved with it. Uh, so what has been outlined is a recommendation of, uh, five weeks of pre-registered programming that would be offered through FCSS. It does not require any additional funding from the municipality in order to put it on. Um, and then in addition to that, there'd also be some pop-up programming available for younger kids. Um, as I said in the report, uh, the programming that is, uh, outlined, it does start at the age of six, and that's because FCSS isn't able to provide childcare. Anybody under the age of six would require a parent or a guardian to be with them. Um, so it, it does hit several different age groups. It provides programming throughout the summer, so it's not just one block of time. Uh, we've talked about making sure that there's something available in July, something available in August, and trying to spread it out so that if we, that you'll find that it's four days of programming, so a week would be considered four days. So maybe we do something where Canada Day is on a Monday, then we have a week of Tuesday or Friday of that week have some sort of programming and that sort of thing. So I think it's some really great options, but leave it to council, uh, to find out if this is what you're looking for or if you're thinking that we still need to supplement something in addition to this.
All right, I'll turn to council to ask if there's any questions.
Well, I think that these are great opportunities, uh, thank you for bringing these, uh, forward, and, um, of course, thanks everybody who participated in our, uh, survey as well. Um, I guess, one of my questions was, um, I, we have heard FCSS in the past that unless there is a need, they won't offer the program, so I'm, I'm curious, um, what, uh, how, how are we getting these, I guess, is it just because you're, you're so nice? Do we have to survey, or I don't know, what is it?
Through the mayor, to councillor Potry, I haven't heard that same message from FCSS. Uh, what I have heard from them in, in my conversations with them is that if there's already, um, that service being provided, they cannot have duplication. So this is not a service that we have available in Colhurst, it's not something that is regularly occurring, we don't have another service provider or organization that's doing this. Um, these are programs that they are currently running in other communities, and so it's not something that they're having to develop from the ground up and reinvent the wheel. Uh, they're able to take something that they've seen success with, and, and they've been able to fine-tune and bring it to another community, um, but with a Colhurst touch, so making sure that they're approaching these programs in a way that they think would be very successful here with, with our residents.
And then another, a follow-up question, I guess, uh, just to confirm, like, these, the, there's no cost to the municipality that are a normal FCSS, uh, thing that we pay, but, um, for the residents, it would be free to them as well?
Correct.
And, and then, um, as for capacity, do they have any estimates, um, on how many stu-, youth, sorry?
Through the mayor, councillor Potry, I, I did ask that question, it is entirely dependent on staffing resources. Uh, so they are hoping to have some summer students to be able to assist with the programming. Uh, the estimation, very rough, very early, uh, twelve to twenty, uh, youth for each of the registered programs. So when you look at, for example, the FCSS Summer Fund Day Camp, that's two groups of twelve to twenty happening at the same time, so of the two different age groups, because they would be happening in concert with each other. Um, and then what they would do is, their recommendation would be, if you do one week of that program in July, one week in August, uh, kids could sign up for July and then be on the list for August, and vice versa, to open it as broadly as possible to the community, so you don't have a small group of kids participating throughout, but trying to open it up to as many people as possible. Uh, it would be requiring pre-registration, because they do need to make sure that they have the, the right staff or the number of kids that, that will be participating. Um, and then the expectation would be, if you sign up, you show up.
So I, I wonder if that would open up the door for us to be able to provide additional resources if they get a really large registration number rather than limiting how many people can take part. So I wonder if we can have that conversation with them in the sets, you know, we can, we're happy to provide additional resource if, if that's what happens?
Through the mayor, to councillor Caldwell, it, it would be entirely on their staff resourcing. So, um, whether or not they're able to get the summer students, that sort of thing. So we're, we're going to be bound by, by the resources that they have. I don't think that just providing additional money will, will, is, this. I don't think that just providing additional money will, will discuss that, if that's kind of where you're going with it. But what I would say is, a discussion that I've had with them that they're very keen on is doing the youth leadership camp first, and then having those participants actually assisting with the other camps, if they're willing and available. So it would be giving them an opportunity to also help assist with some of that resource in need.
Wonderful.
Just one question about this. With the current programming that they have, I'm assuming that this would be in addition to that, and they would plan to keep that going?
Through the mayor to Deputy Mayor Ackman's, yes. And so this would not be canceling out the current programming or anything like that. I will also say, I've only been here for a few months, so I'm not sure what regular FCSS summer programming looks like, but this would, this would not be taken away from programming that they're currently providing to the community.
Thank you.
What?
Thank you. Just, I was just wondering about the Family Ties, Fun in the Sun Day Camp program. So is there a relationship with FCSS and Family Ties? Okay.
Any other questions? Um, okay.
I might add something, Mayor Montoya. This whole conversation stemmed of our YDCA program last year. And it was council direction to seek alternatives to that particular program. So this would take the place of that program, and we would inform the YDCA that we would be moving in a different direction for 2024.
Great, thank you. Alright, if there's no further questions, go ahead.
I have one other question. Did the allocate funding to potentially pay for the YDCA program already in the budget this year? We did, yes.
Alright, so again, we do have some options for a motion, if someone would like to put that forward. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I can't. I move that council direct administration to implement the summertime youth programming recommended by FCSS, including FCSS Summer Day Camp, Family Ties, Fun in the Sun, Day Camp, FCSS Leadership Youth Camp, and FCSS pop-up program. And further, that council direct administration to begin preparing marketing and promotion materials to advertise such programs and encourage residents to register for the above-mentioned groups.
Alright, is there any questions on the motion? Counselor Florence has made this motion, Counselor Florence, would you like to speak to it?
No, I think this looks like a great lineup for the summer, and I'm very excited to be able to offer this to the residents of Colhurst. And not that it's just one thing either, that's a variety of things, so great work again, and that's it.
Alright. And for myself, I think that I love the variety that you have within this, and also the thought that it's free for people too, I think it's amazing. I really look forward to seeing how this is promoted and looking at, and actually see more, again, next year, if people felt like they knew about it, if that was one of the concerns that they had moving forward. We'll go down to Counselor Caldwell, if you'd like to speak to it, sit down.
I agree with everything that both of you said. I think one of the exciting components for me is that development of leadership with our youth. That is my favorite thing, and if they can, you know, get those youth in there volunteering with them, that's pretty exciting, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just excited for this, that's it.
I just want to say, we asked administration to review this and find options, and I think we found, I think something that's even better than what we currently have, that suits our needs much better, and it's saving our money for other things, I guess. So I think it's a win-win-win in my mind, yeah. I'm very pleased that it's been brought forward.
Excellent. Would anyone like to speak a second time? Do you want to close, or are you good?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, so Counselor Florence made a motion that council direct administration to implement the summertime youth programming recommended by FCSS, including FCSS Summer Fun Day Camp, Family Ties, Fun in the Sun Day Camp, FCSS Leadership Youth Camp, and FCSS pop-up programs. And further, move the council direct administration to begin preparing marketing and promotional materials to advertise such programs and encourage residents to register for the above-mentioned programs. With that, I'll call a question, all in favor? That's carried.
Just before you move on, Mayor Montoya, I just want to give credit where credit is due. FCSS really is the one that came to the table with the ideas and the programming recommendations, and so they are the ones that deserve the credit, so I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Yeah, no, that's great. I love that we're looking, really looking at how we're building that partnership with them, so that's excellent. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on now to our council committee bylaw. So with this, it was just, I think it was at our last meeting that we talked about, there was just a couple of things that we thought we might say from this, including some definitions. I believe that that is only, maybe I'll just turn it over to administration, just to kind of go over those things really briefly here.
Yeah, probably, I'll ask Ms. Bevere to speak to this particular piece.
Thank you, Mayor Montoya. Based off of last term's media's motion, there's a request to add some parameters and definitions around the term of secretary for committee meetings. So we reviewed the bylaw and the terms of references for each and every committee, and made some very small adjustments, including if we're adding the term definition for secretary. There are also added in chair and vice chair as part of the definitions for the meeting as well. And also, one thing I'd like to make note of is, based off of a couple of conversations that we've been having with committees following the implementation of this bylaw, there's also some clarity around the minutes, but however, what type of content will be captured in the minutes? So that's where we added eight point seven for final clarification in the bylaw as well, which would apply to all the terms of references for all of the committees going forward, that the types of motions we'll be capturing will include action items and recommendations to council. So we have some sort of mechanism to capture the tasks that are coming out of the committees, so they will appear in the minutes publicly, and then the recommendations to council to make decisions on governance-related matters.
Great, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna go to council, see if there's any questions on the information. Counselor Florence?
Thank you, so we had that a motion to just amend it with the addition of secretary, but now there's this several other amendments, so do we have to redo a motion? Or is it, is it kind of just unanimous consent, it's all good? It's through to the Director of West Lees, it's a, it's a.
This is a bylaw, so it was to require all three readings as usual, including unanimous consent to all three at the same meeting.
So, because last time we just did a, like, we just did a motion to amend some terms. We didn't do a, like, a reading or anything. So now we have to redo a reading, because it's been changed so much?
No, it's any change actually to a bylaw, so your motion was to add the definition of secretary into the bylaw. So once we do that, we now have to, we could either do it in form of amendment by law or a new bylaw, and you always choose to do a new bylaw, so there's no hangover pieces. So, yeah, it's just like approving the bylaw the first time, the same process as a law.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, I guess just a question in how this works out then, with the language the way it is. If the committee is going to be choosing a secretary from within, and then we're asking action items and recommendations come forward in form of a motion, there's gonna be templates that those secretaries can follow, right? And they'll provide, get forbidden, it will be provided with some education around how to do that. She just left, she was just picking up some roshers and stuff. I was just half an eye on her. So, I guess what I'm saying is that we have community members stepping up as secretaries, this isn't gonna be a skill set they have, is that something we're gonna support them with?
Thank you, through the mayor's seat, Counselor Caldwell. We have certainly developed a template for all meeting minutes that have been circulated at the beginning of the meetings. And we are also happy to continuing onboarding and training as a secretary needs. Secretary also communicates with me quite regularly, so there's an ongoing relationship and support between administration and all of the committee meetings. One of the things that we have, part of the reason why we made the additional amendment to the bylaw was we discovered in onboarding of the committees that we were missing a mechanism to kind of help with the action items tracking between all of the committees. So we figure if we place that within the minutes, then we can more formally keep track of that together as a group, instead of adding another method of tracking at this time.
Perfect, yeah, I mean, that makes sense, and it's great, as long as the secretaries are able to, I mean, I think that's a really great skill development for them, then if, you know, to be able to learn how to do these kinds of things, and to stay in contact with you, thank you.
Any other questions at the leisure? No, okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to give first reading?
I move that we give first reading to bylaw four five one dash two four, the council committee's bylaw.
Great. Any questions on the motion? Alright, so Counselor Potry has made the motion to give first reading. Would you like to speak to this at all?
I just think, oh, it's just some small changes, but I think it's good to have everybody on the same page, and have some structure towards our own debates. That's consistent and fine, so I think I appreciate the work that our Director of West Lees Service has done to amend this, and I would like to move it forward.
Great, thank you. Would anybody like to speak this? Would you like to close, or are you good?
No.
Okay. A follow-up question, all in favor? That's carried. And then, would somebody like to second?
Yeah. I move that council give second reading to bylaw number four fifty one dash twenty four, the council committee's bylaw.
Great, and should we question on the motion?
Just one question, just on process, do we have to do a motion to do all three readings tonight?
You, if council passes the second reading, then in order to give all three readings tonight, you would then need a motion to allow it to.
Right.
For a third reading.
Okay, okay. Never sure the order I'm asking.
Which requires unanimous consent, council.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak to it at all? No, would anyone like to speak to this? Alright, so Deputy Mayor has given second, made motion for second reading. A follow-up question, all in favor? That's carried. And then, do we have a motion for the?
So I guess we make a motion to put it on the table for third and final reading?
Yeah, what is it usually?
So we can make that motion?
You'll make that motion, okay.
Yeah. I guess, in terms of the language around it, I will make the motion that bylaw number four five one dash two four, the council committee's bylaw, be put on the table for third and final reading, is that? Is that how I would state that?
We have somewhere to provide consent.
Oh, okay, provide consent?
Provide consent to consider.
Okay. Provide consent, oh, to consider, to consider, considering a third reading. Do we have to be that specific in our language? I just thought, just put it on the table, take it off the floor, dust it off.
Alright, so Counselor Caldwell says.
There's some great garbage here, just, Mayor Montoya.
Yeah.
The council provide consent to consider.
To consider giving first reading. There we go.
Council, there's an extra two in there that probably shouldn't be.
Oh, just after council.
Isn't it the best when everybody's watching you type?
Okay, so Counselor Caldwell, does that reflect what you were wanting to say?
Absolutely, yeah, the words are right out of my mouth. So I'll make the motion that council provide consent, consider giving third reading to bylaw number four five one dash two four, the council committee's bylaw.
Great, thank you. Any questions on the motion? Would anyone like to, would you like to speak to this? No?
No.
Alright, a follow-up question, all in favor? That's carried. Unanimously? And then, would anyone like to make a motion for the third reading?
I make a motion.
Okay.
I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw number four five one dash two four, the council's committee bylaw.
So, any questions on the motion? Counselor Florence has made a motion to give third and final reading. Would anyone like to speak to this? Alright, a follow-up question, all in favor? That's carried. Alright, so now we're going to move on to our committee reports here. So I guess, first of all, I'm just gonna go through them here. If anyone would like to speak to that if you were part of the committee. So the first one is the Celebration Committee. Would anybody?
So I'm currently on that committee, however, I was not an attendant for that meeting, so I would maybe pass it over to Kristy for acting. That's okay.
Through the mayor. So, this meeting, we had four local community groups represented, and then we also had our one community member. For anybody who's watching this meeting online, I'll say that we do still have two vacancies on this committee, and we would love to have a couple more volunteers to join us. And so there are two major items that came out of this meeting. One, of course, is the setting of Canada Day celebrations on July first, which is on Monday. And then, the committee also decided to select August sixteenth to eighteenth for minors' days. With that, we do have a caveat that it could end up being two days rather than three, just depending on participants in the weekend and the different organizations and what they want to do and that sort of thing. So they didn't get into fine detail conversation about activities, but wanted to set aside those dates so that they're on the calendar and available, and we can book facilities as needed. And then as they get into the planning process, then we'll fine-tune it as necessary.
Great, thank you.
That is a different weekend than last year, we want to point out. We tried, where the committee wanted to avoid the Corn Fest whoop-up days weekend, which is where we were last year. And unfortunately, there's one other community that has an event that same weekend this committee has chosen. But there really was little option except moving into September, where we couldn't avoid any other major summer over events. So unfortunately, this is the weekend that typically the tree holds their celebration as well.
And the weekend before that is Coldwell Community Fest, which has, we're missing a weekend over the last few years. So, we felt that this was the most appropriate weekend.
Any questions?
Have we had communications with any other organizations that provide activities on that weekend? Because I think they might have already sort of like pre-booked for the alternate weekend.
The only ones we have are the ones that weren't present at that meeting. So there will obviously be communications on a big number of meetings going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have not made any notifications to anybody at this point. But we did want to, yeah, our first party was facility bookings. But we will be covering those pieces off where the committee will be in the way.
Yeah, same, typically, they bought gold bouncy houses and the food trucks, and they do all of the different kinds of stuff like that, so.
It's my knowledge that hasn't been done yet. And last year, that was only in a couple of months preceding the event where they were doing those bookings, but looking for, I know where you're going with this, and typically, that would be parks interact that we would have a conversation with, and unfortunately, they couldn't send a member that night because of the school.
The trickster year.
The trickster year, yeah.
Well, I'm looking forward to this, I love that there's so many community members there.
Great, okay, so we're gonna move on then to our community housing. Who would like to speak to this?
Thank you, did you want me to speak to it, then you can correct me if you want.
Oh, yeah. At the chairs. I'll support you.
Thank you, so we did have our first meeting on Monday, February twelfth. We, our first order of business was to just go through and explore the mandate in terms of reference, the organizational structure. We then looked at a point of chair, we had a really good discussion about, should we be looking at a chair that's a community member? Irene was very clear that she would like to be able to just sit for a little bit and watch what we do prior to stepping up into any kind of leadership. I suspect, though, she has quite a bit of governance under her belt that she hasn't been really open about. I suspect though, she has quite a bit of governance under her belt that she hasn't been really open about. And that's okay. I look forward to that unfolding. So I did accept the nomination as the chair. Councillor Coltrane was kind enough to accept the nomination as vice chair. We did spend some time exploring our, I think you guys have already read this through a little bit, but we did spend some time sort of talking about sort of some of the discrepancies and we've already brought that up to council a little bit and had conversations, discrepancies between what we have in terms of land vacancies and what's sort of out there being offered on the market. And so I'm wondering if see how patients can, within minutes, it said there was really no direction. And perhaps maybe our ask wasn't put in in kind of a formal way, but just to explore, are there some barriers to, like, why is that happening? And are there some barriers that we might be able to support? I know that you've done a little bit of digging, but it's not reflected in the minutes. So that was a conversation that we had, requesting that information.
Yeah, that's true. Which is one of the reasons that we made the amendment to the committee's bylaw, that we did actually, because subsequent to the meeting, we recognized that those needed to come forward in the form of a motion that...
To, through council, a recommendation to council for a motion, right?
We could do it that way, but we at least needed to record it as a motion from the committee as opposed to just the direction was given. So we want our committees to follow the same procedure as we follow the councils. So any action items, we want in the form of a motion, which is why we made the addition to the committee's bylaw. So, first committee meeting, yes, there was some direction given or at least a request of administration to gather some further information for the group in terms of the disposition of some vacant properties within town quarters.
Yeah, thank you. I guess, I was encouraged that I've had the conversation before. I guess, I have a little bit of concern because as a committed council, we've never really made, we've never really made motions. We've made recommendations to council for motions. So I don't know how we can align that because...
Yeah.
Right? Because are we, are we gonna set up a, like a, I don't know, a template that says these are the types of motions that you have freedom to make within here, but you can't make these types of motions. Do you know what I mean? Like it's...
Yeah, and that was why it went the way it did. And when we discussed it afterwards, we felt we needed a mechanism. And yes, the conversation actually started at the committee level. Do we need to make a motion to council to ask administration to examine the disposition of vacant residential properties? I really felt that was clumsy and really was gonna slow down the entire process. So instead, I, in discussions with Mr. Better, we determined that the committee is there to do a job and make recommendations to council, but they also need tools to be able to do that job. And we didn't want the committees having authority over administration, but making requests via motion with administration so we can determine internally whether we had the time or resources to allocate to that specific request at that time. So we didn't use the term to direct administration, we used the term to request administration review of the disposition.
Well, that sounds much less bossy. Thank you for that.
And it is, it is a bit tricky, but our committees are animals of council and their process, as in the procedure of bylaw, should follow that of council as well. But I do think it is, we have advisory committees and we have management committees. Housing is an advisory committee, so ultimately, they will make recommendations to council. But in terms of trying to do the job that they need to do, there will be some internal work committee members are gonna have to do themselves, the exploration of certain pieces. But there's work and in discussion with our management team. Where, you know, the committees were created to help fulfill councils' strategic priorities. That was the entire focus of all the committee redoing all the committee structures. And we as administration are here to support that will of council. So I don't have an issue with committees making requests of administration or assistance. We won't always be able to support it in that fashion, but we may be able to often. So it's, the committee has no authority really over our administrative team, but I'm happy to take requests from committees for assistance and really that's what we're here for, to drive forward these strategic goals and strategic priorities. So as resources are available, we certainly...
And I absolutely respect that because I know that with this many committees, you guys would be just running mad. And we don't want anybody to be having to run at the whim of somebody saying, hey, why don't we look at this? Or maybe we should look at that. So I'm very respectful of that, I guess. But just to go back then, to what I was originally like, I guess, not worried about, but just it's new to me, the idea that a committee can make a motion to direct administration as we've always been an arm of council. And so I wonder if we can sort of have a clear definition and say perhaps a committee then can just make a motion to request additional information or to set up a meeting or something to invite somebody and something like that just for the normal working of the committee, the process, sort of of the committee. But any big, any decisions then require a recommendation to council for motion. Is that kind of what the thought was on that one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we do want some of, we do want these committees to be self-supporting in most form and fashion. But we also recognize that we've got volunteer secretaries, et cetera, et cetera. So we thought that the best we could do here is to assist when we, when we're able to, when we have the resources available. So as an administrator, I have no, I have no qualms with a committee making a request of administration for support or help in achieving some of these goals. But I don't want to put in the form of a demand or a direct, like the committee directs administration. Council committees can certainly direct, or you know, committees as a whole, for instance, can certainly direct administration, but...
You know, I'm using the language within the minutes. It says no additional direction was determined.
Correct.
Then we need to change all our language in here then.
It was the seven minutes that actually lit that topic. And so because we're already on the process, I would suggest to any of the council members that when we're on these committees, that I don't have an issue, or we don't as a team of, as a committee, making a request of administration and allowing our administrative team to determine what resources we can put towards that and timing of those resources. And one of the conversations we had was if it's two weeks before minors' days and a request comes forwards for a significant amount of work from our community services director, that's probably not gonna receive the support that it would at a different time of year, right? So it allows a minute flexibility to be able to do what we can to support those groups, which you think is important.
Thank you. Alright, I guess, I guess that's just how we proceed forward then with our committees. That we're able to just make motions then for, to look for more information?
Yeah, and we would hope our committees do a lot of this, do some of this work themselves as well, right? That's why we bring the public in, obviously administration along 20 more.
Because you're killing me. You're killing me here. I was a big volunteer and super happy to do work and then I got my wrist slapped and saying governance is governance is governance. And now you put me on a committee and say, hey, dig in. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I do appreciate this conversation and clarity, but when we just passed our committee, our council's committee bylaw, that was the addition of number eight point seven that we were just discussing, so that the things come in the form of a motion. So I think that this conversation might be a little bit displaced. But further to that, if we look at the wetlands meeting minutes, they're written in a way that, that you know, they have that, the movement in there and it's just as it says, it's a mechanism for admin or whoever to be able to record what the committee is asking for, right? And so instead of just falling back on discussion, now there's some clear, the clear like guidance moving forward. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I just, language always makes me nervous when we're just an arm of council. Thank you.
Is there anything else in, if we go back to the community housing, that you'd like to highlight or any questions that anyone in the council has?
I think you guys have it in front of you. If you had any questions?
Great. If there's nothing, we'll move on to the wetlands enhancement. From this, is there any, anything from the vice chair, which would be councillor Coltrane, anything that you'd like to highlight or any questions that any member of council has?
Yeah, so we went through the guiding principles, kind of a lens we were looking at using to prioritize projects and evaluate them. And so we spent a bit of time on that. And then, we're also looking at basically jumping into our next meeting with, you know, some timelines and start discussing projects, so. That's kind of a nutshell of it, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, if I can just add on, one of the things, the ask adminis, sorry, the motion five point one, if anyone's curious, that was just brought up because with this first agenda, there's a few items that weren't hundred percent clear at the time of the meeting. So it was just more a primer, if there's anything added to the agenda, so that the chair would be aware of what the talking points were. So just kind of ask the administration or whoever to have a quick conversation with that.
Great, thank you.
As we go along, probably the group will set their own talking planes and the chair will be very cognizant, but yes, we're just getting all these started, so there's bound to be a few of those questions in the process.
A question?
Yes, question for either of the members on the committee. What is the wetlands priority guiding principles document and how did you guys come up with this? Is it something, what's it, who's it from?
We took the strategic plan from council and we, I guess we wanted just to boil it down to a guide really, as to, you know, if we're looking at a roller coaster, it's a roller coaster by law option kind of thing. And it's like, well, well, it's gonna cost us lots of money to maintain, it's gonna, you know, maybe it's not the safest thing, like. So we wanted to have a mechanism for making a decision, basically. So a lot of it is around onway maintenance and safety. And what else is in there, but I could, once we have them, we will share them with that council. I know we're hoping that Christine will be able to put that to the course.
Would you, would you like some assistance?
Yes.
The mayor, the two council clients. So there were five guiding principles that the committee talked about. Environmental responsibilities, operational sustainability, connected spaces, gathering spaces and community safety. And the discussion was really about how do we present these? So that is there a weighting to them, are they numbered in order of significance? And is one a higher priority than the other and that sort of thing? And so the discussion that came out of that was that number one and two really should represent kind of a first and second priority. And then the final three are more equally weighted. So the offer that I had made to the committee was, do you want me to take this way and just make more of a visual representation that might assist in that discussion? And so I prepared something for the committee to look at at the next meeting and it shows the two are kind of weighted line above the other and then the other three are side by side and kind of have an equal representation as to how they might make that decision for what they then put forward to council for consideration.
Awesome.
Thank you. If I might just add to this, this was our second meeting of this committee. So at the first meeting, some of the questions came up of how does this align with strategic plans? This document was made by our public members of the committee, just trying to relate how they're gonna make the decisions in relation to our strategic plan to kind of tie that vision all together and just add some, I don't wanna say concreteness to it, but just add some framework to how we're gonna be kind of progressing forward.
Amazing. That's great.
Alright, any other questions for the wetlands?
I guess, how do you determine the staff members that are attending these committee meetings?
I have, I have assigned them based on the department. And as all the terms of reference state, some have a permanent staff resource, for instance. Miss Hanning will be a resource for the Celebration Committee because that's part of her job profile. In other instances, I will assign them based on the topic of the meeting agenda. For instance, if it's infrastructure related, I'd have Mr. Lewis involved if he has time to do so. If it's, if it's a budgetary, I don't have Mr. Passy involved in that particular meeting. So I'll be assigning resources based on committee need.
Great. Alright, so we'll move on to the last one here that we had with the intergovernmental committee. And so we were all there for that, so we all know what happened. But from that, I do have a motion that I was bringing forward to council. And so I'm moving that council direct administration to draft an intergovernmental advocacy strategy and present the draft to an upcoming intergovernmental committee meeting no later than the May of 2024. Again, I think that, first of all, I guess I'll ask, is there any questions for clarification on the motion? Alright, so I think that for this, I would love to just tap into the expertise of our administrative team to look at what, what this strategy could look like so that we could bring it together so we have something that's more robust, I guess. And so I'm looking forward to this and then being able to fill off with this. Would anybody like to speak to this? No? Okay. So I've made this motion. I have a question, all in favor? That's carried. Alright, so we'll move right into our council reports. And you will notice that I did not actually submit mine this time because I forgot to. But you know, besides that, I'll just give you kind of a couple of little highlights of what's been happening with me. Not a lot in terms of external committees besides Southgrew. I discussed this before with the funding component from the government. And so we did have to have our special board meeting to talk more about signing the letter of note. I've since heard that the minister has met with the chairs for the RITA's and is quite firm on his stance as to what this actually looks like. And so I know that there's some advocacy work that's been happening from some of the other Southgrew members in terms of that. But basically, it's come back that we need to consider how we want to respond to the ministry about the letter that they had sent us. So that's something that's kind of being worked on right now with an issue that we know that was already there. So beyond that, I think that that's kind of been my big thing. There was a meeting that Southgrew did have with, it was with Shannon Phillips and I think it was, is it Kathleen Galloway, who's running for the party leadership? And I was supposed to attend that on Friday, but unfortunately wasn't, unable to go and just to talk a little more about, about the RITA, so kind of something that was happening as well. But yeah, that's all that I can have right now. Is there any questions on that? If not, we'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just quickly, some of the things that I had, wetlands enhancement committee, the EOE, EOE P course, council's role in service slavery. I think that's been absolutely fantastic. So we got another two weeks of that and I'm looking forward to that. The intergovernmental relations committee was good to see there. And then coming up, just the EOE courses I mentioned and then next week I'll be an amity for the Alberta Muni's Economic Strategy Committee and I think that the RITA funding is one of the topics on the agenda there. And then coming up early March, we got the horse quarterly meeting. And then that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you. Any questions? No? Alright, we will move on to councillor Colwell.
Thank you. I did not submit a report either. I apologize. But I just, since returning home, I've been home a week. So by in that time, we did have our, as I just booked earlier, our housing committee meeting on February the twelfth and then on February fifteenth, our intergovernmental committee meeting. I agree that that was a, that was a great meeting. And that is it. For what I've done in upcoming, I have my FCSS coming up on March the fifth. And so far, that's what I've got going on. Thanks.
Any questions for councillor Colwell? Alright, if there's none, we'll go to councillor Lawrence.
Um, thank you. Um, so I don't have a lot to um to say this time, just to, we haven't had a three twenty development association meeting. And Darren Davidson of Uber Transportation was here at our Inter-Governmental Relations Committee. Um, so did a much more thorough update on what's happening with progress of the twenty of February. Um, so I I won't go into that. Um, and then as well, we did not have an M S D A meeting this morning again. Um, and then coming up, I'm doing the E O P courses as well, Council's Role in Service Delivery, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, they're just great. Um, and this week we also have the town of Colhurst and Northridge County I D P meeting, um so looking forward to that. Oh, and for my recognition, this one's, this is a fluffy one. But um because February is kindness month, I just wanted to recognize everybody that's going above and beyond to make the world a little brighter and better through um all the kind things that they might be doing this month. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilor Lawrence? Go ahead.
Um, last much a question, just a comment, just wanted to say thanks for including your um PD reports on those two webinars that you attended. Having that information there, I had a chance to demonstrate, and I thought it was great to see it shared, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome. If it weren't for a gentle prod from administration saying that we have these reports, I was like, oh, right, we did put a motion into this, so, yeah.
But it's appreciated, thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to seeing more of them from everybody.
Great, Counselor Potry.
Um. Thank you, Madam Adina. So my report is pretty simple, I just have uh meetings um that we kind of all discussed.
Meetings.
Um, and uh yeah, of course, not the endless new one. And then up- upcoming, um I did join the finance committee for meetings here, so I'm the first one tomorrow. And um, yeah, there is a meeting that's shown there, so.
Great. Any questions for Counselor Potry? All right, with that then, we'll move on to correspondence. So we do have um a letter that was received from um Minister Schultz regarding drought. Um, is there any questions or anything on this item? Not? Um, the other item that we had was the twenty twenty-three um F C S S report to municipalities, anything on this item? Nope, okay. With that then, we will move on to um the council strategic plan amendments. So with this, we had a really great meeting, I think, to go through this and and to make some um tweaks that we that we thought were necessary. And so you will see them um within the redlined uh council strategic plan. Does anybody have any questions on any of this? Okay.
Just if I might, it's not really a question, but it was just an observation when Spencer and I were reviewing this. The wording under goal two, promote diverse and attainable housing. And the change was to add, and there is an increase in the performance measure, uh town MVP, how it'd be revised and approved to support diverse housing options. And there is an increase in the percentage of non-single detached homes. Um, we just wondered if it didn't make more sense just to say uh duplex and multi-residential developments.
We could say multi-residential rather than duplex.
Or just multi-residential opposed to non-single dwelling. It's just terminology and it doesn't change it, but it was just, yeah.
Oh, what, I I don't, and I have no idea how this fit, like what if it was something that was like Langway housing? Or it was a tiny home housing unit, like it could be something, does that still fit within that? If you were to say multifamily, like to me, those are.
Yeah, I see where you're going.
Like there's, there's differences there, right? Like, cause I'm thinking looking for a variety, not just.
It's a, it's hard to be exclusionary yet or include any, because even single detached homes, yeah, or you're right, a Langway house is still single detached.
But it's a tiny home, okay.
But is it, is that not multifamily, if you have a Langway housing? Then you've got two, two families in that lot.
Maybe it is multifamily then, I don't know, yeah, but same title.
Yeah, that's where I thought multifamily just means more than one family in a location. So that would be increasing basement suites or attic suites or Langway housing.
Yeah, if the mayor's thinking of diverse housing options, like, you know, tiny home developments or that kind of thing, that doesn't really reflect that.
Yeah, I I don't know.
I don't think it's wrong, I just wondered whether it was providing the clarity that you were looking for.
I wonder, I wonder if we can just say then, rather than identifying not just having this one, uh revise and create to support diverse housing options, sort of just to to ensure um, you know, a variety of housing needs are met or.
Yeah, and I, from my understanding, I think when when this was built for us too, if you're really kind of sample performance measures, there could be multiple, right? Um, this was just one that was kind of picked out as being a potential there. And then I think based off of our conversation, what I can remember that day is that we were basically saying, we don't want, we want anything other than a single family home.
Yeah.
And so we were trying to encompass that in a word that I think we fully knew what to call it besides non-single detached homes.
It's not wrong, it's.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So I guess it's um, would, would, how does council feel, do you like this terminology? Would you like to see a change to, I'm not sure, what did you say, multi?
Uh, I probably should back out of the conversation because if you were thinking diversity, like small, tiny housing, that kind of a thing, it does speak to diverse housing options. So my first thought was just make it easy and say multi-residential uh developments. But multi-residential could, yeah. Tiny homes are not necessarily multi-residential, although it comes back, although it is diverse.
I love that we're even just casually talking about tiny homes and nobody's cringing. This is fantastic.
Okay, okay, you're doing it very quietly.
Oh, okay.
So just look to council, thoughts on that, that line, would anyone like to see amended from what it currently said there?
If council's comfortable, I'm fine, let's say, I just, I like to bring it up.
Is everybody okay with what it says? Anyone want to see different?
My, my only thought was, if we're all talking about these things, why don't we just list them then? If if uh if this is what we wanna see, maybe, maybe we should just list them and say um that um support of housing options and then there's an increase in the number of multifamily um uh in in any of the following, including multifamily type of homes.
And other alternative housing options.
Alternative, yeah, other alternative, yeah.
There you go.
That's, that's actually good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Um, just to process uh clarification here, would you like us to go through the document with every single redlined item? Um, or how would you prefer for this motion to come forward?
Um, thank you for the question, Mayor Martina. Um, for today's meeting, I would recommend if there are any additional changes, we have one motion that encompasses all the changes and then one motion that passes the redlined document.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay, cause we currently have this one here that says um to amend it to the following edits. So um that's where we're talking about the edits beyond the redline.
Correct.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, does anybody have any other edits beyond the redlined component? So we just have this, this one um edit to, I just wanna, just to clarify this, you wanted to have um an additional statement? Or did you want to replace that one, the performance?
I think we were trying to replace, replace the uh single detached portion.
To replace it, okay.
So percentage of multifamily and other alternative housing options and.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I wonder if you, instead of percentage, you just say.
Greater number of.
A quantity.
Greater quantity of, yeah, multifamily housing.
Okay.
Alternative housing.
Although, although the percentage maybe is represented as.
It's a measure, it's.
It is, uh, I was gonna say, so I would prefer to leave the percentage in there because then it actually shows a shift away from that single detached.
Yeah.
Whereas you could have increases in homes and trickle, but you could have also increasing largest increases and uh, you know, standard could be that way.
Okay, uh, Counselor Potry, does this, well, I'm assuming you're gonna make this motion. But does this reflect what what you would like this to say if it's been written up here?
To replace. Do you didn't like the percentage of, yeah, that's correct.
Excellent. Would you like to read out that motion?
Yeah, and we would be amend the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five strategic plan to include the following edits. Final goal to promote diverse and attainable housing and encourage under performance measure um to replace non-single detached homes with multifamily and other alternative housing options.
Um, did anyone have any additional redline, do you think that there was any more? If there's a thing on the left, okay. Um, is there any questions on the motion?
Um, sorry, there's other redlines within the document.
Yes, is there, do you have anything beyond the redline, like, okay, nope, okay. Um, okay, so Counselor Potry has made this motion. Um, would you like to speak to this at all? No, okay, would anyone like to speak to this? No, uh, call question, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, so now we'll move on to um the redlined component of this. Um, so you, you'll see that there, this is reflective of our our meeting last time, um when we went over the strategic plan. Um, does anybody have any questions on the material? Or would anyone like to make a motion?
I have a question, good.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, under um maintaining a safe community, ensure that bylaws and policies are revised to promote a safe community. Um, was it meant to be that generic? Was there some meat to that? Like, was there, was there some bylaws and policies that we had some concerns that needed to be revised, or is that just a generic statement?
I'm just trying to remember that discussion, if you have, do you remember that conversation?
The letter used to say, ensure that a proactive bylaw and policy framework is built to create a safer community.
Okay, so do we want, are we saying that we have to revise them? Or are we saying that um that we have bylaws and policies in place that promote a safe community or community?
Uh, that's fine.
I thi- I think if I may, just that that the lens that we're looking through our um bylaws and policies, that we're making sure that we're we're promoting a safe community. So when um we did a strategic plan review, uh I can't remember, I bet I believe you were gondering everything. And so this is a result of some of those changes. But um, this was about the 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 framework question, it wasn't really working because it was kind of getting into like best practices of the C P O. And what we wanna do is kind of from a council level, is make sure that um our bylaws and policies promote a safe community in a sense.
Okay, so maybe that we ensure that we uh, that that we view then our bylaws and policies through the lens of a safe community then? Like, if you're saying we're the governance piece? I guess, I guess I just, when I was reading through it, I I was like, you know what, I knew that you've really done a lot of work already revising bylaws and policies. And I thought, um, do we want to put a a message out there that we're revising them to do that? Or are we just ensuring that they're that? Or are we looking through the lens of safe community when we're looking at a bylaws as from a governance perspective, like what are, what are we doing? Right? That's all, I was just kind of wondering with that one.
Did you want to make a motion uh to to amend that?
You know what, I'm sorry, I actually wasn't part of the conversations, I was just reading it afterwards, and this was a jump up that I couldn't understand, and so I had no context.
Yeah, no, and I think that that's fair, but like I think that what you're saying to me makes sense in what you're saying that. So like, if you'd like to make a motion to amend it, then we can definitely uh change that part up.
Okay, um, so then I guess uh perhaps that ensure that um, that we um use the lens of a safe community um while, uh while, like while looking at bylaws and policies, while reviewing bylaws and policies.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, so you're gonna make that, you're gonna make that motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
So should I say, ensure the council? Is it a governance piece that we're talking or administration?
Well, we're studying bylaws and policies, right, so.
Yeah, okay, um.
So they maybe, and maybe if I might, Counselor, to the mayor, that this might not be the need to revise policies, but ensure that bylaws and policies are designed to promote a safe community.
Yeah, we don't wanna revise them.
Well, it may or may not, but in any, in any work we're doing on a bylaw or policy, ensure that the design includes.
We wanna use the word design?
I prefer to, prefer to revise because some are policies perhaps we don't even have at this point, right, so.
Yeah.
I I I do like the word design.
Yeah, the word design is nice and clean.
How, can you maybe put this for us that we can record this?
Really, and it's, you know what, it would be that simple, then ensure the policies, bylaws and policies are designed to promote a safe community.
So it's replace the word, replace the word revised with.
Yeah, designed, yeah, makes it much simpler, thank you.
Promote? To promote a safe community.
Yeah. Um, and the top one, ensure alignment of emergency services with projected population growth. We, some of that's outside of our power to do so, right? So do we want to ensure it? Like, we, we have no control when the R C M P says we have, people have math leaves, that we've never operated at full complement. So I, I don't know if we wanna put out a statement that says we're ensuring it.
Um, I, I think that when we were looking at that, I think, I believe we were talking more about the C P O and like fire, fire department, like what we could control of that.
So maybe just use internal then?
Um.
Ensure alignment of internal emergency services with projected population growth.
Um, other from council, do you, what, what do you remember about the conversation?
Um, I, I think it was, I don't remember what was before, but I think it was just about making sure that our emergency services were kept up to date with with the population growth.
So it said before, consider where to place new protective service locations so that they align with projected population grow- growth, right? So I think, and so we were talking about not just considering where they go, but like staffing and, right? So it was more, we're looking at more broadly at the service levels.
So if we said support alignment of emergency services, then from our own end, what we could manage, we can make sure that it's there. And we're not committing ourselves to ensuring that the R C M P bloody well, you know, cause we can't, I mean, here. So if we say support, or if we ensure alignment of internal emergency services, then we say we're ensuring that internally our emergency services are kept up to date. So I don't know which one would reflect that in the conversation.
We can use support protective services.
Our safety is kind of risky, okay.
Yeah. And it just, really, it's just the addition of one word to the other, right? Of internal emergency services or, cause emergency services is more than just our, our C P O as well, so are our, our paramedic guys, right?
Fire, yeah.
Fire guys, right? And so um, would you guys be more comfortable if we put support alignment of emergency services with projected population growth? Or ensure alignment of internal emergency services?
I like, I like su- I like support better.
Yeah, support, okay.
Cause then we'll continue to advocate to the R C M P, right, we're still, we're pushing for that kind of thing as well. Can you support that support? Thanks. Can I make that motion then, please?
Is there any, is there anything else that you saw that you just?
No, no, that's good. Sorry, I wasn't here, so I, I picked through it not understanding the context.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah.
It is good because we get outsiders look at it.
I know, and I'm the outsider.
Um, is there any questions on the motion? So Counselor Culva has made this, is there any questions on the motion before I read it out? Let's make sense to everybody. Okay, so Counselor Culva moved that council amend the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five strategic plan to include the following edits. Within goal one, maintain a safe community under tactics, headed point three to state, ensure that the pop, the policies and bylaws are designed to promote a safe community. And then to replace the word ensure with support within point one regarding alignment of emergency services. All right, would, would you like to speak to this at all?
No, I think we had a great conversation, thank you.
Would anyone like to speak to this? All right, I, I will have a question, all in favor? That's carried. And then let's move down to um the redline um component of this. Would anybody like to make this motion here? Go ahead, sure.
I move that council approve the redline and amend it two thousand.
I move that council approved the red line and amended two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five council strategic plan as per the January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four committee of the whole recommendations outlined in motion number seven eight one three dash two four.
Um, any questions on the motion?
Just, is it supposed to say that the red line as amended or amended? I don't know what he said.
Well, the red line version was amended, right, so. Because it's not.
And we need amendments.
And.
Should that say and as amended?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Um, any more questions on the motion? All right, so um, deputy mayor Ackerman says move that council approve the red line and as amended twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five council strategic plan as per the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four committee of the whole recommendations outlined in motion number uh, seven eight, seven eight one three dash two four. Um, would you like to speak to this? Would anybody like to speak to this? Okay, we'll call the question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. And then, um, here we go, we're just going to move into uh, closed session. So can we get a motion to move to closed session, please?
I move that uh, council, section twenty twenty-four free movement information protection privacy act under closed session at seven twelve P M. Consider item fifteen point one procedure by law, point two personnel.
Seven thirty-two, not seven twelve.
What did I say?
Seven twelve.
Seven thirty-two.
Thank you. All right, um, any questions on the motion?
Not kind of.
Okay, call the question, all in favor? That's carried.
Sure. I move the council return to open session at 8:28pm.
Okay, so, Jackie Manners made that motion, call question, all in favor? That's carried, and then we're going to go into